Virginia and the building official Terry Gert reviewed those renovations. There was one that couldn't be made because it, the circumstances weren't, weren't what they appeared when they, when they acquired the property. They thought it was plumbed so that they were going to put in a three-quarter bath in the basement. They then discovered that it wasn't plumbed, that the existing fixtures weren't up to code. They drained onto the floor, I guess, and then over to a floor drain. So, um, so the recommendation of, of Virginia and the building official is to accept the renovations that were made because the other one couldn't be. And that's what 1941 does.
Motion on adoption, 1941?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Virginia, second by Lisa. Discussion?
Um, yes. Steve, um, I'd like to ask if council can have times to visit the property just so we can see the end result? If that would be possible to, yeah, if that would be possible to arrange with you.
Uh, Steve Gordon, um, yes, the, uh, it's closing on Thursday morning, so, uh, we'll be over there tomorrow cleaning and doing finishing touches, but if you can make time available tomorrow, um, feel free to stop by or, um, I can give you, want to give you my cell and if you need it another time. But, um, uh, Thursday morning, we'll be doing a final walkthrough and then the closing's at 10:00. And again, all day tomorrow. So anytime between now or anytime tomorrow during the day or Thursday morning, yes, you're welcome to come over. Love to have you come see it. Actually, it turned out, turned out great. And, um, young couples buying it, um, both at the hospital, I believe, and they're just very excited. And I think it turned out as everybody hoped and the price was really good. So I think, uh, from a tax base standpoint, everybody will be happy and so, um, anxious to get, uh, get going and get the other one done as well. So, so it was great. Um, 319-631-1849. Um, somebody should be over at the house most of the day tomorrow. Feel free to just stop by and/or if that doesn't work in, call me and we can set up a time. I'm happy to open it up and show you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I, I gotta say, I went and toured it and it was wonderful. I can't believe what you could do with, uh, that house.
Thank you.
It's just so lovely, Nick.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. We were, it was an exciting project. It was very nice.
And then you took the brick from the front, put it in the back. It's just amazing what you could do.
Right.
And you couldn't even, you had to hunch down in the third, in the second floor and you made an entry so you can get to it. It's just pretty something to see.
Right, yep.
It's wonderful, Steve.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, the, um, resolution number 1941 is before you and roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Carried?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. And Steve will get the paperwork to you, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get it too. You're here in about seven minutes if you want to just wait a second.
Oh, okay.
Do you mind? I think it'll be easier for you.
Okay, we'll go to streets and sidewalks and Dottie?
Yeah.
Do you want to start?
Uh, could, I, I haven't talked to Pat today or yesterday, but would you want to, uh, talk to the council briefly about what your assessment of the, uh, tree issue is?
Oh, Pat Yegi, I see.
This is Pat Yegi.
I was wondering who you were, who Pat was. And this is going around and looking at the trimming that needs to be done?
Yes, Pat Yegi, can you hear me? I only did the tree, the growths around the sidewalks, um, the trees that overhung the sidewalks and infringed on pedestrians from the side. I didn't look at, um, I didn't look at trees over the street or whether they, um, signs were obscured, either your traffic signals. But, um, I, what did I find like, really at the, in the end, most people complied pretty good. There were a few that were pretty bad, but six or seven is all, I think, that are going to get a notice. Is that right?
Yes.
So, that's, that's the part I did, that, over the sidewalks.
So, the same notice will be given as been given in the past?
They can have that same notice because that, that notice has four categories. Um, 13 feet over the street, it's not, you know, it's closer than 13 feet over the street, closer than eight feet over the sidewalk, interferes with pedestrian walking on the side and obscures traffic signs and corners.
Um, our concern and the complaints I've gotten have related to growth over the sidewalks, which are a trip hazard, and the trees, uh, on the property that are, uh, dropping stuff and, uh, too shady and affecting people who are walking on the sidewalks. We haven't really addressed the street issue, uh, in the past. We made that a, uh, personal obligation. Um, I think we're going to investigate that further because I believe it's a city issue. The streets are, uh, a pathway through the city. Everybody, the city should be responsible for that. Uh, it's the pedestrian issues that we're addressing now. Uh, and I think that is about it, uh, considering we're moving forward on the snow removal. Uh, that's it for now.
Did you want Steve to?
Yeah.
Report about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the-
Steve Ballard.
Right, thanks. I was waiting. Uh, so the council has before it the, uh, second consideration of ordinance number, um, 241, which amends the, uh, which amends ordinance two, or it's, amends ordinance 82 concerning snow removal, um, same as before you, that was before the council last month, requires a hanger or, you know, sticker to be affixed to the doors, uh, of the home before, uh, the city will come out and remove snow.
And I, I think, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, uh, I've also been working with Troy, the police chief, uh, about implementing this, uh, snow removal procedure this year. So, in response to Mr. Shemansky, I think most of the issues he's raised, we will be addressing. Uh, and I think all of them have great value. Uh, so Troy and I have been working out that process and, uh, I think he will share it as part of the police function, uh, probably next month when he gets back.
But this is one notice a season. It's not every time this happens.
No, it's, but that, it will be stated or should be stated already in our, there's one notice given and that's applicable for the whole season.
And if it's a dangerous situation, the city can go ahead and-
Right, city has discretion. It's, public safety is our issue. That is the primary thing.
I mean, the city can always remove snow. The city can't tax it. Under this ordinance, the city is saying, "We're going to give you a notice, property owner, before we tax the costs of the removal to you."
And Steve, can you clarify for, I think Lisa is asking, um, whether the notice is per season or per occurrence?
It's per season.
Per season.
Yeah, it's per season, that's, that-
I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, it is. One notice per season, but, but if there's a circumstance where the city says, "We, we're not going to wait 24 hours for snow to be removed and we're not going to wait for another 24 hours to post the notice and give the property owner an opportunity and, and email the property owner if it's a non-resident or a rental situation." Uh, the city says, "No, we have to do this right now." The city, oh, it's the city sidewalk. City can always do that, okay? But the city won't be able to tax the cost of it to the property owner unless the procedure in this ordinance is followed.
And what exactly is the procedure? Because the ordinance doesn't have elements built in. And I hesitate to support the ordinance without further procedures.
Steve and I, um, talked about that and the, the, uh, ordinance as amended is broad enough so that there are many ways that it can be implemented. Troy and I have been working on a specific process that we will be implementing here.
Can you share that, uh, very relatively soon?
I will share it as soon as it is approved to be shared.
It's the second reading and we don't have solid, serious nail counts.
It's not really part, it's only the process. It's just not, it's not incorp, the specific, the specificity of it is not part of the ordinance. It's this implementation, okay?
That's understood. I, I just am very concerned that we're approving, rewording this ordinance and we're going to end up with the same circus that we ended up last time. Too many people opining about the, the city condition of the risk hazard.
It will be clear.
It's a, we need to be processed clear.
And the persons that will be-
Clear owners of who will respond and who won't.
Calling in about it or noting it will be noted clearly.
If you can get that with Troy at the next council meeting, I-
We are working on it, yes. And he and I would have discussed it more fully had he been here this evening.
Is there a motion?
So, I'm thinking maybe we need to put this off then.
No, I'm, I'm ready to vote for number two. If, if there is no vote-
I am not.
If there isn't a procedure for the third round, I won't vote for it.
Well, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
To a time.
Subject to, um, the procedures that Troy is producing on being-
Cause I was instructed by Steve that we make it more general, not that specific.
I'm sorry, what?
What?
Subject to the process.
The, that, the process, the specific process is not part of the ordinance.
Motions can't have conditions. You are motioning adoption or you are not motioning for adoption. You can't say motion subject to.
I withdraw that condition, so I just motion to move into the second reading.
Okay, and-
And I'm just going to say again, I'm not prepared to vote for this.
Well, then talk to Steve about it because he gave me directions that it needs to be more general.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Well, Dottie seconded.
Yes.
So, we have a motion by Sylvia and a second by Dottie. Is there further discussion?
I just still think it's a bad idea to add 24 more hours onto snow and ice removal when conditions are dangerous.
You think what? I can't hear you.
I still think it's a bad idea to add 24 more hours onto the process of snow and ice removal when conditions are dangerous.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Moore?
No.
Maher?
Yes.
Casada?
Yes.
Herbald?
No.
Miller?
No.
Not carried?
Okay. Then, Dottie, you'll talk to the chief and work on it some more.
Well, we have to work with Steve here because Steve gave me directions as to why we should-
Well, some people wanted to know the process too.
Well, that's what I said.
Okay.
And I was struck down because I have the process written at home. So, I'm between the devil and the hard blue sea here.
Is there any other issue you want to bring up in your report?
No, I would just like specific direction that will not be thrown in the trash can again. That is all I'm asking.
That's what I was trying to.
Yeah, that's what I've been trying to do, but it's impossible here to arrive at any-
I think people wanted, some people wanted the process. Some people-
I told Steve, "I'm sorry." Uh, that's all I knew is tell our lawyer what I heard.
You want to give her any more direction? You want the process, right, Lisa?
Well, Sylvia wants the process. I'm not so sure this is the greatest idea with what I heard from public input. This is going to be a one-time notice, just like right now. We know we removed snow from sidewalks. So, we already know this. How is one more notice going to help us with that? Is basically my question. And especially if we don't have something built in where-
Mm-hmm.
If it's dangerous, yeah, the city can remove it at city expense, but is that what we want to do?
The ordinance says within 24 hours, right? That's been there for, before us landed on council, right?
It's 24 hours after notice then.
Right, or after observation because generally your notice is triggered by that. So, my question is if we have access to the emails and Troy is carrying those around, I mean, wouldn't he be able to send an email quickly so that at least the city documents? The problem that we had with all of the, the public feedback we received several months ago is that they, they felt that this was an arbitrary process and it was unclear who in the city was even authorized to evaluate, authorized to call. I mean, we went through a lot of hoops that could have easily been solved if we just had a timestamp. When was a determination by a designated city official to trigger a hazardous condition on this property? Email them or call them, end of story and move on. And that's it. 24 hours, click, just like the ordinance says. And if there's no response, the city steps in as Steve Ballard explained.
The change that this makes is the prior ordinance said that after 20, within 24 hours, you have to remove snow. This ordinance says that if somebody from the city would go out and say, "You've had 24 hours, now you get another 24 hours." So, that is a change.
I had no idea that that was a change. I read it to understand that it was 24 hours and written notice would be provided, not just any notice, written.
Well, no, it is written notice, but I'm saying the change from, from the existing ordinance is that it was, it was 24 hours from snowfall, now it's 24 hours after you get notice after 24 hours of snowfall. So, it changes 24 to 48 hours is my point.
Well, I think that we have enough public comment to get a, any revisions at the next council meeting before the first snow. But we need to get our act together as a city council.
Well, Troy's position was as soon as the snowfall stops and it's apparent that it is high or deep or more than minimal, he or one of his police will be driving around the city and they will make observations and they, at that point, will put the notice on the door.
That sounds fair.
So, it's a knot of 24 plus 24. It's as soon as they can get out safely and put it on the door.
They're going to give notice-
Before 24 hours has passed, before people have had a chance to clear it themselves.
Doesn't make sense.
Can we move on?
Okay.
Can't hear you. I can't, can't hear you.
Dottie, maybe you can talk to some of the council and, and work on this for November to get a consensus.
Working with the council seems to be very difficult.
Um, so we'll go, are you done with your report?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to Josiah.
All right, I, I submitted a written report. As you can see, there's, uh, almost half dozen work on the right-of-way projects going on. Most of them are wrapped up. And as I noted there, a lot of them still have restoration issues and a lot of those contractors have been notified in the last week, um, with updates and requests that, I guess, a reminder that you need to restore this and it's not there, so you need to come back and start dealing with it. Um, on the, well, I'll just go down, go down through in order. So, as a follow-up, at the August meeting, your stormwater permit from the DNR is up for renewal next year. You approved the, um, resolution to submit that application and fee, which we did. I attached to my report this month a copy of your new draft permit and as part of that, uh, there's like a public comment period. Um, and I, that goes till Monday, November 18th. So, if, if anybody wants to look at that in depth and, and give me any comments, we can get those submitted. As I note here, we'll be looking through them as well. I'll provide you a summary next month's meeting of any thoughts or comments. But they actually said in their cover letter, they only added one sentence to the permit the way it's always been. And that is to add a section on the website about stormwater permit, um, information, add a section about retaining topsoil if you, and I can send you this, but-
Yeah, I'm sure.
-retaining topsoil on a, on a project, whether it's a, a development project like the hotel or a, or a home project, it's going to disturb ground. So, that's the only change.
Great.
There, uh, as I said, there's notice requirements. We're going to post the notice in the press citizen, which is required. And then I just posted a sheet, um, Chris, up here at the door because you got to post it at your facility, so, uh, if you could leave that until November. There's a reminder in there about the upcoming Olive Court project. Again, that was postponed this, this year. And again, that is going to be rebid in December, um, for construction next spring. Then we have the pavement repair projects that were authorized in this fiscal year, which were also going to bid separately from Olive Court, but not at the same time. I'm actually going to stagger them so that, so that the two projects aren't together at the same time. We'll do the Olive Court first and then have the other road repairs probably maybe three weeks behind so they can look at them separately. Uh, the last item is pavement markings. That's kind of been frustrating one. Um, there's been some work over here on the west and I noted in my report, I, I do understand that there's been a lot of rain off and on and they try and do the work at night, but, uh, we've been hounding them every two or three days here for a number of weeks, um, and on my phone even, even, uh, now and tonight. So, the latest I heard was that they were going to get started on Sunday and work this week, which they, which they did and, but they only did about a hundred, a couple hundred feet, if you've been out on the west side. So, I'm constantly, uh, bugging, bugging them to see what the plan is. They've got good weather tonight and Wednesday for sure, so, um, wish I had something better to report on that, but keep after it.
Do you recommend we start that a little earlier, just in case of weather next year? Or is it just, do you think this year was just coincidentally bad weather?
Yeah, both. Both.
A lot of rain.
Yeah, both, I guess, stands to-
When do you think we should, it should be started next year?
Um, I've been thinking about that. I've actually started to put together the next bid for next year now. Uh, I think like in March, we could put it out.
Sounds good.
Be good.
Oh, Paul's raising his hand. Paul, can you, can you join him up there so we can, you had, you're talking about pavement markings?
After the snowplows go over the area in the winter, those markings are virtually gone. They should be painted in the spring and they should be painted again in the fall. And it should ought to be put in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I agree with the fall suggestion only because during winter, driving conditions, um, it's really important to have those demarcations for safety reasons. Sometimes it's, it snows so much, the only thing you have to drive with is a yellow line or a, a white line on the road.
I think, I think the history on that, if you, I don't, maybe you recall, Louise, we used to do it twice a year, spring and fall, and, uh-
Is this part of the budget cuts that we made this past round because of budget cuts?
Well, I mean, it's been a while. It's been a while.
It's been a long while, long time.
Yep, we had budget cuts and streets and sidewalks was impacted budget area.
No, no, no. We got rid of the twice-a-year painting a long time ago.
Yeah.
It's been once a year for a long time.
Like, like maybe 10 years ago.
Okay.
But back before then, it used to be twice and maybe that was the reason, but at that point-
Well, we tried a lot of different paints. I mean, you might want to talk about that a little bit. You tried a lot of different paints that came out, you know? This one didn't work so well.
Yeah, there's definitely been refined and, and the paint we use now is, is a waterborne paint. It's, it's the type of paint that you expect to paint every year, okay? It's not a long-term paint, but it's, it's, the price is better. Uh, there's more expensive paints out there that are supposed to last longer, but they are, uh, it's not an incremental increase, it's a, it's a big jump. Um, so, just budget-wise, uh, we haven't, haven't been doing that. I think, I think when we switched from the two to the one, it was, well, do we do it in the spring or wait until the fall? And I think the thought was, let's do it in the fall when school starts and the university starts and start fresh then as opposed to first thing in the spring and it gets worn out by the end of the year. So, I, if I recall, that's kind of where we got to where we're at today. Um, but in, I guess-
But drier weather might be July or August.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and actually, maybe it'd be a good idea just to put it in your budget, uh, and so council can address it at budget time.
The pavement marking work-
Payment markings.
Yeah.
Two payment, two paints, one.
Okay, yeah, we can start there.
We'll start there.
Who does it? Who does the painting? A professional? I mean, do we contract that?
Yeah, it's a, it's LL Pelling. They have a painting division which does pavement markings.
Um, I'm just thinking, it, the, the better paint might be more expensive, but if it's a cost-benefit thing, um, and you're only going to do it once and not twice, it might be better to get the expensive paint if it's going to last.
Right. So, I think, yeah, let, if-
Let's start with the budget.
If you're agreeable, let's, we can, we can start putting together options and-
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Next budget round, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. That's agreeable to council.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Josiah?
Can we talk about the website sometime?
Yeah.
So, I've got several things for you.
Okay.
Okay, um, I just checked my text and the hotel developers aren't going to be here tonight because they're tied up over there, they, on some project that they've been working on and they said they'd be late, but now they canceled. And so, I, I, um, talked to, uh, Lenchen from, uh, Chains-
Chains Interrupted.
Interrupted.
Mm-hmm.
And I told her that we'd wait for the developers, but, um, I think we should go to Lenchen right now. And Sylvia, did you want to talk about that?
So, let's, so you're asking us to move over to ordinance 244, which is at the bottom of today's agenda and its consideration of the first ordinance of 244, mandatory training for the detection and reporting of human trafficking. Um, our community is fortunate to have University Lake Partners Development Dream support ordinance 244 for mandatory training and reporting of human trafficking. The Marriott Hotel brand already complies with the requirement of the ordinance, providing anti-human trafficking training and committing to reporting. Should the hotel in University Heights decide to change to another brand or become its own independent hotel like Big Red in Madison, Wisconsin, there are no Iowa state requirements to train staff to detect and report human trafficking. This council can play a part in how a hotel operates in our city to detect and report human trafficking. Until the state, Iowa, the state legislature takes up the issue, cities are left to design their own solutions. Tonight, Chains Interrupted, an eastern Iowa nonprofit dedicating to fighting the evils of human trafficking, is here to provide counsel, an overview of the problem and the part we can play to make things better. Please help me welcome Lenchen Rayside, co-founder of Chains Interrupted.
Thank you. Lenchen Rayside, thank you to the council. Thank you Sylvia for keeping this crime top of mind and being willing to, uh, bring it to the forefront and talk about it. I'm really grieved that this has to be an issue in our state today, in our nation, but I'm also very excited that the state of Iowa is a forerunner. We have other states in the nation looking to us for our model with hospital training, hotel motel. We're in the schools and we actually even have three other countries, um, around the world that are asking for our protocol for the hospital. We train doctors and nurses. So, you can be proud to be part of this great state. So, why hotel training? Why is it important? Law enforcement in the state of Iowa says that 75% of all trafficking cases take place within a hotel or a motel. And why is this ordinance or some version of this so important to our state? Because the hos, or the hotel workers are literally frontline warriors in the fight against human traffic, as are children, uh, our educators in our school, as are doctors and medical professionals. We have had a principal of a middle school at Clear Creek, Amana Middle School be a part of busting one of the largest child sex trafficking rings in the Midwest. And that happens in the hospitals and it's happening in the hotels. Children are being saved because workers are being trained. Training includes, um, naturally, what do you look for? What are the signs that, that maybe something's off? So, what to do in that situation? But actually, more importantly, with the issue of child and any kind of sex trafficking, what- and any kind of sex trafficking, what not to do. So, we are very, keeping aggressive about what not to do, because at the risk of sounding overly dramatic, there's literally women and children's lives on the line, if we're doing the wrong thing, and what kind of action should be taken. We know of children, and there's cases under investigation now, that have been saved in our community, because citizens like you and me learned what to do, and they took action. Again, I regret that there's a need for this to go on in hotels and motels. The result of the training and public awareness is that Iowans, us as citizens, are making our communities a safer place for women and children. The result to the traffickers is that when we, when they know, we're looking for you, we're in the schools, the hospitals, we're at the hotels and motels, we're keeping our people trained, we are making it very difficult, and I hope someday impossible, for traffickers to operate in hotels and motels in our state. And, when the victims, when these women and children are paraded into these hotel rooms, and they see that we care, and that we want to make a difference, they might have the courage to speak up, to say something to that hotel worker. So, from the front desk to the maid service, these warriors can help identify a child or a woman in need and make a difference. So, we are being a voice for those who have no voice. This ordinance, or some version of this ordinance, and these trainings, tell the traffickers, not in our town, and not on our watch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you, could I ask some, did you, so I appreciate what you're doing, obviously.
Yes.
This is extremely important cause. Have you looked at the draft ordinance that we're looking at tonight?
Yes.
It surprised me that it wasn't very detailed, and I didn't know, you know, we have maybe a unique opportunity, because we don't have a hotel yet.
Yes.
To maybe make the ordinance closer to, I don't know if there's a model ordinance that you see, like if our ordinance is missing some things that you would typically expect. I mean, I read it as basically training and not retaliating for reporting. What other things do you typically see in ordinances, or?
Well, again, all of this is very much forerunning, in, across the entire country, and Iowa is doing a good job. I like the ordinance, because of the simplicity of it, but that doesn't mean things can't be added or taken away. I could look into that, and I would be happy to do that, and get that to Sylvia. There's just not a ton. We're actually writing policy and protocol, and, and, and so, there's not a lot to go on in these, in these areas. But the training we have done, like for Hotel Kirkwood, we have some universities and colleges asking us to help write the curriculum into their hospitality programs, let's say. So, we go with what the statistics show nationwide, what law enforcement, we work, we work together. We have a great coalition. There's a great task force here in Johnson County, and so, we're all working together to come up with the best answer for that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, definitely. And Steve, I, did you, I mean, do you know much about whether there's, have you had a chance to look at this in detail?
I read the ordinance, and I said that the council has authority to adopt this. I haven't surveyed model ordinances, and I'm, I'm guessing there's things like that out there. I don't have a look.
And I apologize. I probably should have come a little more prepared with that, but yeah.
I, I will say that the, the, the brand, the Marriott brand, our, our development agreement with the hotel developers in our, our, our ordinance, it also provides that that can't be any other hotel without a four-fifths vote of this council, just on that point.
But I just don't ever see the assignment of the brand holding up on a, you know, an internal company procedure like, like this, as unfortunate as that would be.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think we're gonna seize.
But Lenchen, if you could, I know that you work with, closely with Dr. George from the.
I don't in particular. Teresa, my co-founder, Teresa Davidson, works very closely with George in that Iowa coalition in Des Moines. Yeah.
So, maybe we can connect with him and get an opinion from that group.
Yes.
For it.
Who are you talking about?
It's their, it's their statewide coalition of anti-human trafficking in all of Iowa. They're working on the legislative front.
Lenchen, can you tell me, before you came early, and I talked to you a little bit, and you talked about the Marriott statement was very strong, very good. Could you talk about that a little bit?
The CEO of the Marriott wrote a statement to everybody about their policy mandating the training, whether it be, you know, nationally. I think it's nice locally, because we really are boots on the ground, and we keep our eyes out for what's going on in Iowa. But the first two paragraphs, they're not long, but if you want, I don't know, do you have that with you? Could, do you mind hearing? They're short. It's a short two paragraphs is what the CEO says. Can you read that? Do you have it with you? Okay. It's.
Well, yeah, I'd like to get an, an idea of it. Okay.
It's very short. The CEO of Marriott says, "In the early morning hours of one of our hotels in New Orleans last March, a safety and security associate at the hotel noticed a 12-year-old boy in the company of two men buying snacks. The associate overheard one man say to the other, 'I may take this one home.' Trained to notice signs of human trafficking, the associate thought the situation didn't look right to her, and overheard the statement and thought it was an alarm bell. Following her training, she alerted her supervisor, and they called the police. When the police arrived and questioned the men and the little boy, they confirmed our associate's suspicions. Things were definitely not right. The young boy had been missing for three days. Thanks to the quick action of the associate, this story has a good ending."
And those are Marriott-trained associates, is what they're talking about.
That's Marriott's corporate training program.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive.
And she can email you that, that three-page statement that he makes.
So, the most important thing to leave from here is that it happens only when it's a top-down initiative.
Yes.
Can you tell us how many hotels or motels have implemented a, a policy like this?
The hotel motel has been a little more difficult than, than the schools and the hospitals, and we kind of are wondering if it's that, do we want to be stigmatized? Like, we do training, but it's just become a sad reality. So, we're gonna go back in. We've trained quite a few hotels and motels, but we're gonna keep going back in, saying, this is about the health of your community, obviously, and that it keeps the traffickers away. So, we really want to approach this from that more life-giving standpoint, if you will, versus, oh, this evil, this evil is happening, but why we do this is to keep it from happening.
Right.
Are there any more questions for her?
The ordinance references Iowa Chapter 710A. Is that what the training is?
I don't know about that, Steve. I sent Steve some legislative information. You can speak to.
What is the training we're requiring? I mean, is there a program?
There is no training.
So, there's no, we're requiring something that doesn't exist right now.
No, there's no require, yeah.
Right, or cutting edge.
Well, how is that gonna work?
It's lawful, according to Steve. Correct, Steve? Can you speak to the lawfulness of a city taking up?
The city can enact this ordinance, just like I told you. 710A just defines, defines human trafficking. It doesn't speak to training.
So, we just, we don't have, they can say, hey, don't allow any human trafficking in this hotel, and that considers that's training. I mean, what considers, what's considered training?
Section two is flexible to incorporate the wonderful work that the Marriott is doing now. The Marriott is working with a national, worldwide organization called Polaris. Polaris is a leader in data collection and methodology of training of detection. Of course, we can't share everything, and it's not made available to the public, because it's proprietary for purposes of detection. They work with all sorts of, I guess, police enforcement networks in order to come up with those modules. That is what the Marriott works with. Number two, in section two, it says, if you're a tiny little, if you're a tiny motel, suppose an Airbnb or something like that, and you need training, you can go to an organization like Chains Interrupted, which provides free education and training and a certificate of completion. We just want to make sure that you are getting training somewhere, and that it's not, cost is not gonna be a barrier.
Right.
It says, do you charge for your training?
Oh, gosh, no.
Can you clarify that?
That we do not charge for anything we do, and, and I, we do it all volunteer ourselves as well.
I might add, from another perspective, but when I was a prosecutor, I did all the drug trafficking, and because we were in I-80, we were getting trafficking constantly.
Yes.
And that will be the case with trafficking with any kind of produce, one of which would be children.
Yes.
Also, because it's so close to the fieldhouse, and the overnight issues that emerge from football.
Yes.
You will have probably ladies of the evening issues as well. So, I think it's mandatory, absolutely critical, mandatory, that we commit.
I, I think it's just an assurance, especially to residents, because we are an experiment already. No one else in Iowa has a hotel this close to a residential property line, 200 and something feet from residences. There's generally a little bit more separation, and I think we need to set the standard of not condoning this type of activity as a matter of public policy.
I do, too.
Dottie, I would also like to speak to what you said, and thank you for your work. Human sex trafficking is outpacing illegal drug and arms sales now in money, because you sell cocaine once, you could sell a little boy over and over again.
And, and we're just fortunate that, for now, we have a brand that it has a corporate policy to, to not, not tolerate this. And I just want to make sure that we send the right message to any possible changes. Virginia, you're a Badger. You know about Badger Stadium. It's right next to the Red Hotel. That is a non-brand hotel. I don't know what type of standards they may have for their internal operations.
Okay. Personally, I would like to read the Marriott program, to compare it to what we have before us here.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of Steve taking a look at this, and, and also getting Troy involved in terms of.
I already spoke with Troy. He's been part through his work in Iowa City with respect to the Johnson County Coalition, and his direct involvement, I don't know, because he was in a different capacity, but he was not opposed. He thought this was forward-looking. Those were his words. And I hesitate to use Steve for something that Lenchen has access to, which is legislative surveying, which I think is your interest. I, I think you have resources, if not maybe Johnson County Coalition.
Yes.
Can access those for free.
Talking about model, model ordinances from elsewhere?
I don't personally, but yes, there are people on the Coalition that that is their primary focus, to, to look at that.
I just want to review the Marriott policy, because they've got a lot more legal vetting going on than we do here.
But I'm not too sure, Virginia, if Marriott's going to release proprietary training materials to you. What type of information are you looking for?
Just, what is their policy? How do they define an employee? You know, like.
Someone who's working for them.
You got, I think details would be good. I agree that, you know, it's good to be out front. I definitely think we need to get the details, though, and I appreciate you doing the work to get us model ordinances and anything like that, that you think would help.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's already been very clearly explained and defined, and if they're already on board, and they have had the successes that they have, I mean, they know more than other persons looking in academically or intellectually from the outside.
That's right. Jim Glasgow and Greg Stiltner, the owners of One University Lake Partners, have expressed strong support for this ordinance with no objections.
Well, I'd like to hear from people themselves. I'd like to hear from Troy. I'd like to hear from Steve. I like.
Troy unfortunately is away at training.
I am aware of that, so I am not ready to vote on this tonight. I think we need to look at something, like we look at model ordinances, like what Nick has brought up, and I don't think we need to rush into this. I think this is very important. Don't misunderstand that, but.
Oh, gosh, no. I think we all agree.
We have a responsibility as the council to not just pass something, because, oh, it sounds good.
Well, I think.
So, can I just ask a few more questions about, like, the nature of employees? Best practice would be to include basically anyone who works in the building.
Yes, I believe so.
Maintenance people, et cetera, et cetera. So, not just front desk staff.
Absolutely.
Now, what about people that work in a restaurant attached to the hotel?
That would be, obviously, I suppose, I, I would consider that, if, if they're employed by Marriott.
Like, is that something we want to have included in here? I, you know, people working under independent contractor arrangements is increasingly common. I have no idea how that relates to the hotel industry, but I assume they have people who are not employees, but who are in the building.
Right. Yeah, they obviously, if they're under, if they're contract workers, that's different than obviously being on the payroll, so to speak. Yeah.
Would you, would your organization be able to meet with council, with Troy, with?
Absolutely.
With people to look into this more?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we, I can, we can get you an outline of what that training looks like, and once again, it's always changing, because the tactics change, the traffickers' tactics change, and so, the training and the education is not gonna be a one-and-done sort of thing. Yeah.
Did, so do you go to the, like, hotel location, do the training?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a certain number of people that you need to be present at the training to?
No. No.
They're super flexible.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're all pretty passionate about it. Yeah, we have one paid employee out of our hundreds of volunteers, yeah.
And it's an ongoing thing, too, because.
Yes.
The way in which they can find and perpetuate the situations are really very creative.
Yes.
And so, you have to be constantly process and change-oriented.
Yes.
But if you've worked with groups of persons, that, this, this is a no-brainer, because you've got to educate, and then explain why it is such a blight on society, especially on our community. I mean, that would be all we would need, just sink this whole damn.
Yeah, yeah. And that's such wisdom. We typically think of trafficking as taken, that a child is snatched and taken, but I train on the five major methods that traffickers use, and you could literally see a little child walking down the street, holding somebody's hand. They've been so terrorized, they won't speak up, they won't cry out. Kids that still get to use their cell phones. So, there's all these methods that the traffickers use, but they break, broke down their victims in such effective manner that they are too afraid to speak out.
Do you have a card you can leave with me, so that I can contact you to?
Do you mind getting out your email?
I will give it out, because I, yes. So, my email for the organization is lenchen, that's spelled L-E-N-C-H-E-N, at chainsinterrupted.com. Interrupted is one T, two Rs, if your spell check didn't correct that for you.
So, nothing to do with the ordinance, but could you do a community program?
Yes. I do that all the time. I do public presentations. We bring law enforcement around. I'll do my presentation, what are the methods traffickers use? How can we, as parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, help each other to stay safe? And then, law enforcement will follow up and answer any questions that relates to that. Yeah, so I love doing the presentations. Yeah.
Yeah. And this is why your, your organization is so well-positioned to speak on the issue, because of your extensive network with the prosecution side, the medical side, and the educators, and all the many different folks that are out in the trenches doing education, training, and reporting.
It's, it's stunning. I've been doing this since 2003. There wasn't even a language for it back then. And so, to see this come so to the front is very exciting for me, because, you know, I ruin every dinner party I go to when they ask me, what do you do? So, I'm really glad that we're making movement forward.
And, and I'm really glad you're here in support of the ordinance.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your work, all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll put this on the agenda next month. I'll. Okay, we'll, we'll put this on the agenda next month also and see where we are and I'll contact Lenchen. So did you have something, Josiah? I know you were standing there, did you?
No.
No, okay. I just wanted to make sure. I'm going to go to mayor's report and I want to talk a little bit, change the subject drastically and go talk about the Fun Fall Festival, which was Sunday. And the event was such a big hit. And I want to really thank the Fine Arts Committee members, the Community Events Committee members. It was Sarah O'Sullivan, Lisa Havercamp, Pat Yegi, Shelley Fravel and Lisa Moore. And as you remember, we had to cancel it last year because we had four rain days, really terrible. And I think they just, this committee was so great to come together kind of last minute, but they had all these ideas that were so great. We had an antique tractor from Sarah's grandfather. We had the police car and the policeman that was on duty that day was there and Troy came too. Chris was there. There was really nice fun games and crafts, food and snacks. And I know three council members came, which was nice to see. I know some were out of town. And there was really nice photo setups and they've already talking about how to improve it for next year. They've already been talking about it. So it was really a nice event. I kind of thought we had 50 to 75 people there, a lot of kids, the neighborhood. Even though it was cloudy, it wasn't rainy. It was cool, but it wasn't too bad. Carla was there, was very nice, right Carla? Yeah, so that was a big success and thanks everyone for coming and...
Thank you Louise for your work. Louise, Louise cooked the hot dogs, so...
Yeah, I smell like smoke. Well, it was great. My husband helped me and I took the credit for him cooking, you know. And then the other thing I want to say is that Nate Kating and his partner contacted me and they wish to cancel the October 10th meeting to a later date because they need more time to fine tune both their design and the pro forma prior to another meeting with city council. And he apologized for late notice and any inconvenience. And they will get back to me to touch base on the next steps. So the meeting on Thursday, October 10th has been canceled. Then I think that's everything I have. And so Jim Glasgow and Greg Stiltner weren't able to come tonight. And so, you know, they do have three, five-story structures. And in case you don't know what they are, they're the two elevator shafts and a stairwell shaft, maybe you call it a stairwell shaft. But that's what's going on over there right now and it's moving right along. Then we'll go to the, if there's no questions, we'll go to the legal report. Steve, I know these are just things that the council needs to take care of, some business.
Yep. So the first one is the third consideration of ordinance number 239, which just kind of updates our refuse and recycling.
I motion a motion.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Virginia. Discussion, roll call, vote.
Maher.
Aye.
Pisada.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Carrie.
And then the, the next item and the last item I have is ordinance 243, which sort of reinstates the urban chicken ordinance. Never got comfortable with that phrase, but number 201, so...
When, when does that expire?
It expired, I think officially back in May.
How many families participate now, do you know?
Zero.
Do you know Sylvia?
Officially, we haven't had a, an inspector to keep track of this, but I am aware of families that are taking the chicken training from the Indian Creek Nature Center out of Cedar Rapids. They are the only center, well, I shouldn't say only, but they are a routine established center that provides urban chicken training and a certificate of education. They do this type of training for about 10, 10 different cities who have an ordinance like urban, this urban chicken.
How many families, how many children?
Zero.
No, that's not true.
No one has any chickens right now.
We have no permits on file for urban chickens in the city.
Right, and they're asking to get the ordinance reinstated so they can go ahead and get their chickens. That's why this is here, otherwise it wouldn't happen.
So you said we don't have an inspector?
Well, we don't have a rental housing inspector who would have been in charge of doing this.
Why don't we, what?
Well, I'm not talking about inspecting a chicken. I am talking about the conditions, let's not be stupid.
No.
Why can't we use someone like Russ to check?
Yeah, so long as they know the measurements and setbacks.
Anybody to...
There's setback requirements that are new. You can't have your coop placed anywhere near 10, 15 feet near the property line, something to that effect.
Well, I think there are criteria that need to be followed because I wouldn't want to live next door to a chicken house that was...
Yeah, so this is what's happening, that it's a family and they're ready to go with us and they're getting their training. Who are they?
It was a family last time.
But the problem is the ordinance.
I mean, is it a real fan, like do they have a name? I just, can they come to a meeting?
They can come to an email and let me know that they're not fictitious. They're just people who relied on the ordinance and don't understand sunset the way a lawyer does.
Have they talked to their neighbors and got an okay? I mean, because maybe they can't do it because the neighbor won't approve it.
The ordinance doesn't require an okay from neighbors, not all ordinances do.
I thought it did.
Well, that one does.
Doesn't the urban chicken one?
Yeah.
Or it did because it's expired. But my understanding is that it did. There is a process for it.
Anyhow, they just...
And I know in Iowa City, that's...
Allow them to...
Because I know people who couldn't do it in other cities because their neighbor was objecting to it.
Where does it say you need to have property, you have to give notice, that's true. Yeah, you do have to give notice. You have to give them notice, yeah.
Give...
You have to give notice to the neighbors. Where is it?
E.
E.
So what is the remedy?
I haven't looked at it in a while, for about two years.
Maybe we should look at it again? Or we need to have someone monitor it?
Well, that's why you need your, I guess Russ Boyer is, you know, so long as they understand, I mean, why not have the building inspector? It's really a rental building type of a requirement.
Well, I don't know. Russ is a farmer, he might know more about chicken houses and...
Well, the majority of this council wasn't on council when this was, and they haven't reviewed it. Isn't that correct?
I thought you had to get approval from your neighbors. Isn't that in there?
Yes, it is. There's all kinds of stipulations.
It says notice, that doesn't say consent.
I would recommend council look this over before just...
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's some time.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't, my concern is I wouldn't want to disappoint the children that were planning on it, so...
Yeah, it's just four chickens, that's what the ordinance provides.
If we, if we could give time...
So we, I just don't want council to prove something that they haven't really looked at thoroughly.
Right, I, no, I agree.
And they, they, the people need to do some homework too.
Well, you mean they're saying they're not prepared?
Well, we're not just approving this for one family with four children, we're approving this for anybody that wants to do it. And when you say this needs to go in the backyard, we're already having problems with saying backyard in relation to porta potties. So I think there are considerations here beyond four chickens and disappointing children.
Have you had time to look over the ordinance?
I've read it over. I, I don't, whatever council wants to do, I don't mind putting it off or we can...
This may just be me, but in terms of some of these things, if, you know, I mean, number one, it's sunset, it has sunset clause presumably for reasons, it would be kind of reconsidered in the future. And so I think we'd want to, if we're going to do that, we would do that. Also with an election coming up, I mean, I'm a little less, I'm, I'm kind of more curious to hear what voters are saying on some of these issues. And since we have an election, the people who are running, I think this might be something where they would get feedback about it, that it's going to be more fresh than the feedback I had when I ran two years ago. So...
Well, it would be helpful if we were to have, you know, a public forum to hear what that feedback processing from the candidate says. I, I think right now the League of Women Voters reached out to the mayor and we don't have a contemplated Women's League of Voters public forum with the candidates expressing their position on a number of policy issues, so...
Because this would be an issue.
That would be very good.
This would be an excellent issue.
Yeah, we can talk to people. And if you recall how the forum went two years ago where there was kind of an attack on someone and then earlier in this term when Pat Bauer and Mike Havercamp were accused of partisan politics by someone. So I just don't see that a forum is necessary in our little town.
You mean unilaterally?
That's my opinion.
Interesting.
Um, we're discussing urban chickens now and so...
I find it renewing this with, as long as, I just need to verify that you have to get approval from your neighbors, not just notify them. And I don't see that here.
I know there was discussion and there, you know, this went back and forth, there were several considerations. Nick's point I think is well taken. What I remember is that the council said, well, look, we'll give this a try and we'll see how it goes and we'll revisit it.
And it was a two-year try and nobody applied.
Yeah, nobody.
And I, I recall discussion about that issue was, you know, do you have to get, you just have to tell your neighbor that you're applying so they have notice and can come to the council and make their voices heard? Or do you have to get your neighbor's consent? And I don't really remember whether, like in drafting, whether it went back and forth, but I know there was discussion point on that.
Yeah, it was. So what would council want to do?
I'd like to revisit this next month with language requiring approval from neighbors under E and not just notice, that's my preference.
Does anyone else agree?
So what are you going to do if the neighbor rejects it, both or just one? Or all three or all four, however many are abutting a property?
Well, I think that can be discussed next month.
Well, I just want to ask Virginia, she's motioning a change to it.
I think you got to get your neighbor's permission to before you put chickens in your, your yard, but...
And I think we need a much better idea of the inspection. I mean, we're having difficulty with inspections as it is.
So you want to look at it next month?
Can I just ask another question? I don't know if anybody knows this. Do we get, if there's calls from the, if someone in University Heights makes a call to the Iowa City Animal Services Center, we get charged for that as a city, right? Like they send us a bill for each service call? I just...
I don't know about each service call, I know that we got a lump sum.
Well, they do like an average or they say you've had this many calls, like nine calls and we were up to 15 one time a year or whatever. And then that, that rate adjusts what we pay.
Okay.
You know, like, so they don't, we're not charged at the time, but we're charged after the year of this is what you owe, you've had nine calls. I think we had up to 15 once as a high.
You have an estimate of what a call costs? I mean, is it...
Well, I'm not prepared to discuss that right now.
A friend of mine bought a house in Iowa City and the previous owners had chickens and animal services was at their house all the time because, for various reasons.
I guess we got from chicken, animals.
They probably should have had their chicken permit revoked.
So I'll put this on the agenda next month.
We can't even revoke a rental permit.
And council can at least discuss what they want to see in the ordinance or if they want to consider the ordinance. And Steve, well, do you want to give some input to Steve now? I mean, we know what Sylvia or Dottie, we know what Virginia wants, we know what Dottie wants, we know what Sylvia wants.
Actually, I will tell you what I have. It's not what I want. It's objective collected data on the ordinance, so I'll just track it down if I can. If I don't find it, I won't send it to you. But if I do find it, I will send it along because it's the same information the other council used to review the information. So I'm not sure if I still have it, but we'll check.
Yeah, my concern is, is really only whether the neighbor, adjoining neighbor has a complaint or not. I think that, that would kill it, but that's the only consideration that troubles me.
Okay, can we keep moving on?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. City clerk report, Chris?
Well, there is no written report. I do apologize for that. I'm trying to get through all of the paperwork I received while I was gone, the voicemail, the emails, questions, et cetera. I will be sending out updated rental and building permit spreadsheets, I anticipate later this weekend or early next week, and see where we are with who has turned in on time and who has not. Those who have not will be notified and they will also be notified that they now have to pay the late fee.
Thank you, Chris.
Louise, we have some members in the public who are waiting here for resolution number 1943 Americans with Disabilities Act. And in the interest of time for them to respect their time, it's 8:20.
Okay.
Can we push up that agenda?
Is that okay with council to move that up? Okay? So we have consideration of resolution, it's under Finance 1943. Let me get closer to the microphone. Committing to applying the Americans with Disability Act of 1990 as amended to the Swisher Trac Municipal Park and Green Space.
That's right. The purpose of this resolution is to provide some, some explicit and expressed guidance from this council body. We have been fortunate enough that we were the same body that acquired and purchased Swisher Trac at the direction of 76% of the public instructing us to, to finance and acquire it.
Sorry.
And so in reviewing the most recent information on this issue, the July city video is, is really the, the foundation of, of the genesis of this resolution. It's unclear from the statements that were made at that council meeting, what was council's guidance to any volunteers that are assisting in the design or the recommendations of the, of this tract of land? And so I think it's valuable that as they go forward, we provide, one, a message that we support and stand by ADA accessibility of all city public spaces. It makes sense, it is fair, it's cost effective because we've got the money coming forward. And number four, it is the right thing to do. So with that in mind, I've also added the requirement that we disclose to any committees that are providing consulting services to this council with adequate disclosure as to how much money is actually earmarked for Swisher Trac or could be earmarked for Swisher Trac so that they keep that in mind. The last thing we want is a misunderstanding of how much funding was available to these groups. My biggest concern, and it's concern shared by many other residences, do they think we don't have the money? And that seems to be the, the clouded message that I am getting from, from what I see on the video. They think there's no money, so they're going to deliver solutions that are not ADA compliant because they think there's no money to comply with ADA, when in fact that is not the case. So I think we need to have some financial education to the tree board and any other board that assists in, in formulating a design for the ADA. And I think, can you give me, scroll it down, Chris, please?
How far do you want?
That's right. And then the third, if there is any possibility that this tract of land goes anywhere, any assignment, transfer, et cetera, that the ADA not be circumvented, that the ADA not be frustrated in application, which means that we as a council body must stop and not instruct Steve Ballard or the engineer or anyone else who is providing staff services to the city to find up loopholes on how to apply the ADA. The ADA applies as a matter of federal law and it should apply as a matter of vision for making the city safe and walkable so that people of all physical abilities can enjoy and make use of our community spaces that we hold and trust. So that is the reason why this resolution came out. There is uncertainty and I think tonight is the opportunity that you have... There's uncertainty and I think tonight is the opportunity that you have as a forward-looking council to clear up impressions that we don't support the ADA or we're waffling back and forth as to whether it might apply and that Steve Ballard is sitting on a pile of research that exempts ADA from the Swisher Track. And with that, I'll end.
I did not quite track all of the like pile of research stuff. Steve, do you, do you have any response to that? I guess, I don't know, I was not understanding.
I don't think I understand either, but I will say this. In July, the tree board presented a recommendation for some improvements to the Swisher Track. It was part of the, it's called University Heights Tree Board's Recommended Plan for Swisher Woods. And that came up and was discussed at the July council meeting. I was asked, you know, what about like ADA compliance in light of this plan? And I did look at it and I said, based on this plan, there aren't any ADA requirements. I also said, the council wants to implement accessibility considerations or concerns or features. The council absolutely can do that, but the ADA doesn't require it. I don't know what the ordinance, I don't know what the resolution saying you have to comply with the ADA is going to add to the tree board's recommendation because I don't think the ADA requires anything for what the tree board recommended. Now, again, that's a separate consideration with whether the council wants to make efforts towards accessibility or, you know, so forth.
Steve, can you clarify who asked you and have you circulated that information to the rest of council?
Dottie asked me at the meeting and so I, no, I don't know, I don't know what you mean by circulated. Everybody who was here or was on the phone heard it.
You generally write a legal report that outlines options of what your conclusions or findings are. I just want to know.
I'm sorry?
You generally will share with council what your findings are on issues and you generally outline that very nicely.
I did that in my August legal report. Unless, I mean, if you want something else, I'm happy to provide it. But that's, my point is, is that the question I was asked related to a real narrow proposal that was made by the tree board.
So the tree board could implement their mulch and whatever they were planning on doing it inexpensively for that population that is, how should I say, vital and healthy and into the big deal hiking, then because the ADA is a civil rights piece of legislation, it applies to everyone, everyone, large, small, healthy, infirm, incapacitated, as an opportunity to enjoy the nature that we have purchased. Remember that when the council made the choice to purchase this, it was a huge majority and that benefit and burden falls on every one of us. So we should, all of us be able to enjoy it to the optimum. And also because we're all being penalized with the bonding money and tax money, we have a distinct right to enjoy and appreciate the property. I think it's fine that they go with the earthy chips and all of that, but there is another requirement, I believe, that there is that portion of the tract that would have a pathway that would have a gravel base. And if there are chips, it would be with tar and it would be compacted so that your foot would not be depressing anything as you walked. Because as, as someone who's compromised for life or someone who's rehabbing from a broken hip or a broken pelvis or a broken leg, you have to have a steady surface. I can speak for that. And, and just this wildness of a mulch where you don't know how deep you're going to put your foot is going to throw you off balance, which you can't afford. So it seems to me that you can, you can appreciate the beauty of it from both perspectives. And now we also have the money so that we can get this compounded, we can get it fixed and have a few benches here and there so that those persons that are compromised or handicapped or whatever word you want to use can also use this beautiful nature tract that we all have a oar in the water.
I motion adoption of resolution 1943.
There's a motion by Sylvia.
I move to second.
Second by Dottie. Discussion.
So I would just ask Steve, I guess, what his opinion is on something like this. I mean, I get that we all support the ADA and we all support making this accessible. As is usually the case, the details matter. I guess I'm not following fully what this, I understand the whereas paragraphs, I just, I'm not really sure what this is going to do and, and kind of what the consequences of it are.
I can't speak to what it's going to do. What I, what I would suggest is that, my suggestion to, to you would be that you perhaps focus more on what you want to do with regard to the usability or the planned uses of the Swisher Tract and what you want to do to make those planned uses more accessible to people and focus less on what does the ADA make us do. I was asked this narrow question, if we just want to do this, what does the ADA make us do? And I said, nothing. Okay? And I stand by that. All right? But that doesn't get into the point of, you know, well, hold it. What about people who need, you know, can't walk on mulch or aren't comfortable?
And what's reasonable? And what is fair?
And all I'm saying about that is that those aren't, those aren't legal questions.
No, that's correct.
And Nick, to answer your question, what would this do? It does a couple of things. The first paragraph does a message. It clarifies clearly the two feet on which this council is standing on and what line, what side of history is it going to be on? ADA or obstructing ADA? It made it very clear. If the staff obstructs or restricts the application of ADA, I mean, that's pretty much the policy position. Number two, within 30 days of adopting the resolution, we've got to send out clear financial information to the people that are kind enough to volunteer their time so that they know exactly what it is, that what pot of money they're working with so that they can, you know, think, you know, what other possibilities exist besides free resources? Because I think there's a clear misunderstanding of how much money is currently available and would be available in the next budget. And that impacts the way they think and the way they are proposing information to the council body. And number three, because on phase three of the July report from the tree board, there was a reference to conveying the property, the Swisher Track into a conservation easement, that is a huge lockdown approach to what should be public space. 76% of the voters said, give us a park and green space. They didn't just say a park, they just said both, a municipal park and green space. And that's all this is doing. It's clarifying, it's not locking anybody down other than putting us on the right side of history with respect to the applicability of the ADA. People like Carla are here tonight in support of this resolution. You heard Mr. Schmidt speak of his years of working with ADA for the University of Iowa. It's, it has a real life meaning. We have other members of the community that can't make it, that have multiple scuriosis that are.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about that. I guess I was just getting concerned that, I was looking for JP if he was still here just because I, I, if this doesn't really do anything, then where the work needs to be done is in the actual planning. And I just get concerned this is pushing off again, time that could be spent actually planning accessibility features. But Virginia, what were you going to say?
Just to the statement of this doesn't really do anything. So the ADA has huge carve-outs when it comes to natural areas. So like Steve said, we can pass this tonight and we can make a park that's ADA compliant that consists of a mulched trail because.
Considering, but Virginia.
Because they make huge allowances for natural areas. They don't require you to pave.
No, actually, we would be adopting the most current guidelines that the federal, that are ADA.
Yep. And again, they make huge carve-outs for natural areas.
All I'm saying is we should be ADA and we have to know how much money we have to support the ADA. Right now, there's misunderstandings on the finance side.
Yeah, I just don't want there to be confusion about the power of this resolution.
It's powerful, Virginia. It is very, very powerful.
Well, I don't, does it sound to me like we have an agreement on what this actually says or does and I'm not going to.
Then I asked for a vote. Is there a second?
Well, how do we vote on something Sylvia?
The second was by Dottie.
Okay.
And while we're in discussion.
I see.
And.
I just, I get concerned that this is, again, just kind of passing the buck if it doesn't really do anything, you know? I wish we were spending this time talking about an actual plan. I mean, we, I'm hearing that this.
Nick, we delegated the design of the Swisher Track to the tree board. That's where all of your, what's, what would this do?
So what does this change though? What are you saying that this changes about the tree board? Are you saying right now that we're not going to, that we're changing what the tree board is doing or not?
No, it's going to tell the tree board.
It's going to mandate that there is also an opportunity for that 50% of the population who really do still.
But we all agree, we all agree that we want to be accessible. It's just, I don't know what the detail, I feel like this is just another one of those things where it looks like something's being done, but the work is not being done. The details are still, I'm not seeing any details. We heard from the tree board what they are suggesting. What, what are we actually suggesting that we do?
And the tree board is operating with comments like, no, the ADA doesn't apply. So that is not helpful. That's what this is, this resolution does.
But if this says apply the ADA, but the ADA doesn't apply, that's, I guess that's where I've just, I'm not understanding what we're doing here with this.
So it just.
I would like to hear from, about concrete design.
But see, we're not doing it simply because the ADA would mandate it. We're doing it because we are a community of a variety of persons, all of whom have the benefit and the burden of this purchase. And it should be built in if there were no ADA, if you're going to have mulch and the sort of stuff that the tree board's talking about, that's fine for that population. But there is another population that needs to be served. And I've just given, given you an illustration of the.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree with that. I just don't know what, are you saying, I don't know what we're saying to the tree board then. Are you saying no mulched trails?
No. There, there's room for two different surfaces.
Yeah.
It's called design a park with ADA.
Have you been involved with the, with the tree board at all in the Swisher Track? Is that something you'd be interested in doing?
Sure.
I mean, that's what I would prefer is to have you have a seat at the table, have JP or whoever's interested rather than, you know, passing a resolution. I'm concerned that doesn't really do anything for us. Does that make sense?
Mr. Schmidt. It's just more confusion is what it sounds like.
Rich, you want to say something?
I'm going to say from a practical standpoint.
Yes?
The university was not doing anything.
Can you speak to the microphone, Rich, so that public can hear your comments?
Well, it's hard for him.
Take it over.
Anyway, the university wasn't doing anything. And I started pushing them. And in pushing them, they became more aware of the ADA thing. So they hired an architect. The architect came over and he wanted to see what we were doing. Well, we were moving a door or adding a door to the Bow and Science Building. Oh, I says, where do you want it? I told him. Oh, he says, that's, that's not possible there. I says, well, you better put it where it is possible. Well, he added another 40 or 50 feet. Well, 40 or 50 feet and you're in a wheelchair, that's not going to do much. Well, it is going to do a lot because it kept people from getting up there. So I went over to the hospital, got a dilapidated wheelchair, told him to sit down in it. He sat down in it and when he sat down in it, he says, now you take me to where you want to go and I'll take you where I want to go. So we did that. Well, we had to help him out of med labs because that doesn't have, that has nothing but steps. So we went ahead and as we went through the med labs, we, he, I said, okay, now you, you get in and you take me to where you wanted to go. So he did. Well, he took about three or four strokes at it and he couldn't do it. He couldn't go anyplace. So as a result of that, I said, I give up. He says, you win. And so that door still isn't there. And you have to be a strong-minded, I hate to say it, but a little stubborn in order to get this new sort of device going. People are so easy and so going that it's easy for them to go someplace. If you had to go where Carla goes and she's got parents, especially my wife, that takes care of them, that has to keep on going because it's not going to go away. People are getting, I'm telling you, I'm an old goat. And as a result, I, I can tell you that as you get older, you've come to realize you're not the king of the road anymore. So I, I want to see as much as possible, but I agree with you on one thing. We have to have a plan so that we can start, but you can't start halfway through and then decide you want to do it. You got to have it in the beginning and stay with it. And you, you know, money, money, money. Well, you might be surprised. Look at that guy that raised $3 million for the children's hospital. He didn't even think he was going to get 500. But you got to get the will of the people behind you and you're going to be surprised what's going to happen. And so I say, you may have so many dollars in the pot or you may not have any today, but you can get volunteer architects to help you. This guy was old and he had old ways. I'm now old, but I got young ways. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Rich.
I mean, I don't have a problem supporting the, the resolution. I think that the point is, I mean, number one, I, I don't really like the implication that the city council will not direct city staff to pursue analysis that circumvents or frustrates application of the ADA. To me, that's suggesting that something was done or that we were about to do something to circumvent ADA.
It does.
That's not the discussion that we were having before. The other thing is, I feel like this resolution again is just another one of those, I don't know if it's related to the campaign and, and themes for that. I haven't really been paying attention, but I think that the important thing is to do the work on the plan. You know, the plan, someone's got to actually figure out what the paths are going to be like to be accessible. You know, what, how this is all going to work and, and that just hasn't happened yet. The tree board's been working hard on it. This is again, like I said, I don't, I didn't like that sentence to the extent it seems to be suggesting something about either past behavior or predicted future behavior of council or legal council for the city. But again, I would just encourage anybody who's been following this resolution or, or supporting it to actually, you know, to be involved with the planning because that's where it's going to make a difference. It doesn't sound like this resolution is going to change anything. You know, I like the whereas paragraphs that might be sending a message like you were kind of saying, I think, but, but I think that's where the difference is going to be made in the actual work on the plan.
And I want to say that the actual work of the plan was presented in stages one, two, and three in July, and none of this beautiful conversation came up then. That is why Resolution 1943 is before you, so that we don't forget what date, what time, what channel this council took a clear position on supporting the ADA.
I just don't thi, I don't think this changes anything, but I'm, it's fine.
That would be-
It's fine, I was just-
Well, it, it sounds to me, it still sounds to me like we're not really sure what this says or does. I like your idea of having Carla be part of this process. And she says she wants to do that.
I think we-
And I agree that that, that little clause sounds like it's, it's an accusation, and I-
I would be willing to do that, and when I was in high school, my class started- Okay, thank you.
It's pretty high.
When I was in high school, my class started the, um, accessibility awareness. And I made kids write an essay why they wanted to do this for the, the day, and they were in a wheelchair from the time they got to school until the time they left. The only exception was to go to the bathroom. Otherwise, they were required to be in a wheelchair. And there, there were so many reactions. "How do you do this every day? How, how do you not be so sore? And how do I get unsore, 'cause my arms are killing me, from using the wheel, the wheelchairs all day?"
So, what is the, what would the process be to add Carla to the Tree Board? Or to at least whatever committee, I don't know if there's a subcommittee within the Tree Board that's dealing with this? I mean, I, I guess I would prefer, if, if Carla's interested, I would prefer to do that. Just add her to, give her a seat at the table with this discussion. She's clearly knowledgeable on the topic.
But we also need other mobility restrictions. We have blind residents. So what, you have deaf, you have, um, a physical, a physi, new physical amputees. I mean, Nick, we need an expert to help us.
There's another little boy.
So this is-
Why are you saying?
Changed now. It's changed now.
No, if you're asking, how do we, how do we do this?
I don't understand what you're saying.
What would it do? Yeah.
I, I would, I would take all the, all the no-sayers and make sure they're on the committee, 'cause I think we could answer most of their questions. And if you start like that, if you got a negative attitude to start with, then you don't belong here. But if you have doubts, then you belong here, 'cause we can teach you what you have to go through. Carla has gone from a wheelchair, as she said, her shoulders are bad now from pushing the wheel. Well, actually, longer than that, but anyway. Actually, the result is, you've got to get in and do it. I'd volunteer to be on that committee if you would like me. And now, I'm a little bit stubborn.
That's good. So what's council consensus on this?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Would you mind, Nick?
Please.
Excuse me. So, just to orient everyone, so in, in July, the, the Tree Board submitted this report. And in, in the minutes of the July meeting, there were two motions made. One was to, um, adopt the recommendations and begin the necessary work. And it looks like that motion was withdrawn. And so the next motion was to give the Tree Board direction, what it says is, "Direction to pursue the ideas in the report." And that motion was adopted, okay? Um, you know, I'm not sure there's consensus, but, but if, if what the council is saying now is, "Hey, those, uh, the direction we gave you to pursue the ideas in your report, make sure you address accessibility issues, and by the way, you have a budget to do it." I mean, if that, you know, that's, that's where this came from, was this Tree Board report, and then a direction to pers, tell the Tree Board to pursue the ideas, you know? And, and the ADA came up when somebody said to me, "Given that report would the ADA apply?" And I said, "I don't think it would." Okay, but I'm gonna say again, that doesn't mean you can't pursue accessibility. That doesn't mean the Tree Board shouldn't be told, "You've got a budget to pursue accessibility."
We can do better than the law. We, we need to stand by and do right by our residents.
Better than Resolution 1943, too.
Yeah, I think so. So I, you have a proper motion if there's any further discussion?
Well, I, I will second, um-
We have you as a second.
Yeah, we have you as second for this resolution.
And the, the Tree Board, if somebody wants to be, if the council wants to appoint people to the Tree Board, that's council's prerogative.
Yeah.
So, the next term, you know, term, somebody's term expires every year. Sean DeSara's term expires at the end of this year, so.
End of this year.
Oh, like in, end of December.
So what do you, what are you, what is your feedback, Virginia?
Yeah, could you speak in the microphone so everyone can hear?
My feedback would be that we scrap Resolution 1943 and simply make an ad, make a motion to instruct the Tree Board to consider ADA, or consider not ADA accessibility, 'cause it largely, like, again, like, it doesn't necessarily apply. What, what we want is accessibility on a portion of the trail.
So I would be willing, yeah, I'd be willing to support-
You can't, Sylvia, you're shaking your head at me.
The ravines, I, I-
There are hills.
I've been through the Swisher Track, Virginia.
Okay, so-
I've wondered about that.
Any access, any accessibility trails would simply need to be confined to flat areas.
Sylvia-
And that is a matter of physics and not a matter of policy.
Sylvia, what does that mean?
There was a motion?
No, Sylvia, you've done my homework? What does that mean, please? You're just spew, you're spewing words, and you're not making sense.
And you're being petty right now. Let's move on.
No.
There's a motion?
You're not making sense.
Mayor?
I, I think there's still discussion going on.
Pettiness.
Oh.
You're the officer of the meeting, ma'am.
That's your interpretation.
Pettiness was what you said.
They're still discussing it. I know there's a motion in a second, but I don't wanna cut discussion.
So if there is, if there is not an opening on the Tree Board until the end of the year, would it, I don't know if council would entertain a motion to give direction, as Virginia had stated, but also to specifically reach out to interested community members and get feedback on the accessibility from, from any interested community members?
I just wanna clarify for the record that since July, I am the only person out of this council who has reached out to members of the public to ask if this is a vision of our community that they want. And consistently, the answer is absolutely not. We purchased this municipal parkland and green space for the use of everyone. And we are really upset that this is even being contemplated or hasn't been clarified. Do something about it. So I think-
I'm not running for reelection, that's why, I think some people are better situated to, to have been getting a lot more feedback than I have.
Well, we've had public input on this. We have had work sessions on this, Sylvia, so we have reached out. Maybe we need professional guidance.
I think, I think the question is boiling down to, we need the assistance of folks who have ADA experience from, from actual perspective, such as the Schmidt family. And second, we need to, we need to bring an ADA specialist on board with clause number two. That pot of money should be used precisely to assist a group of volunteers to help shape and formulate their outlook, so that when they do come to council, they're, they're, they have a holistic approach. So, um, I am not going to withdraw this resolution. I think it sends the wrong message tonight. It's a confusing message by this outgoing council. And I think if there's anything that we need to be doing, is leaving things in good order and clear.
Why, can I speak as a citizen? Why can't the Schmitz meet with the Tree Board and start making plans? And let's eliminate all this formal process and just start working on this. I think you're making it more difficult than it needs to be.
I agree.
We all are in agreement, and any, any person who is saying that we are not in agreement with ADA, I'm sorry, but they have a political agenda. Start working with the Schmitz. Start working with those individuals who do have handicaps that prevent them from enjoying the track as we hope they can. Let's start moving forward, work with the people who have knowledge. If we need to bring in somebody from the outside, great. If we don't, if we can make things, figure things out with the people that we do have in-house, meaning in the city, that's fabulous as well. But we're getting nowhere with this bickering. And I'm saying that as citizen Chris, not clerk Chris. It seems reasonable that the Tree Board, judging from what I have heard, observed, they're very good with nature and trees and natural sorts of stuff, like mulch. This is a different requirement for just the surface of it. It's, it's, it's so hard, if you haven't been handicapped in any way, you can't begin to comprehend how important having a flat surface is. You, you're gonna trip and fall in an, in an absolute minute if you've got a multi-surface. The Tree Board does not have the knowledge to appreciate what we need for compounding, et cetera. So I think we need at least a specialist to come in and to talk about how a small portion of that nature trail could be changed so that it's actually accessible to the people that walk from Oaknell, or Oaknoll, or the people like, like Rich and, or Carla, or myself. So that whether it's a recovery from a fracture, or if it's a life sentence, you have to have a surface that will accommodate a wheelchair, or a walker, or a cane. And mulch will not do that. My worry is the Tree Board is not going to have the focus that we need to have to make this available for everybody in the city.
For years to come.
So I agree with what Dottie just said. I just, I'm hearing that that's not what the, the resolution does, so I'm just wondering how we actually accomplish that.
I, I disagree. Do you, Dottie, you're, you're being-
This is the classic-
Is inconsistent with the resolution?
We have a resolution that doesn't do what she says it's gonna do. And so, can we just pass it and go ahead?
No, there's a, there's a proper motion.
Because-
There's a proper motion, if you guys want to close discussion. You know what, Mr. Schmidt just reminded us that you have to be stubborn. So, um, I'm going to pursue ordinance 1942. It's on the table.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, and it doesn't do anything to restrict any of the good comments that have surfaced during this good discussion, doesn't do anything to limit implementation. It's a super flexible, but clear and firm resolution on the side of ADA accessibility.
Are you gonna remove that clause?
No, because intent was being read by someone who didn't draft it.
Wait, if you are suggesting that that's what the intent of that line is, then I can't support that line if you're saying-
I'm clarifying that you're reading intent, and you weren't the drafter, and so I'm not going to-
But I'm voting on it, so I need to know the intent, I mean-
It's the plain language. Let the plain language guide you.
So, Steve, can you remind me, can I move to amend while, would this be an appropriate time to move to amend?
Sure.
So I would move to amend the, the resolution to strike that, the sentence that I read earlier, starting that council will not, for the reasons that Sylvia, I think, just stated, that it seems to imply-
No, I did not.
That the city is-
Nope.
Attorney was doing something wrong.
I said, I told you to read the plain language. That's it. Rely on the plain language.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, we need to get that- Sorry, you have to go back to the second page.
You want the second page?
Second by-
I'm sitting right next to you, and I am certainly telling you just the plain language.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
That council will not direct city staff to pursue analysis that circumvents or frustrates application of the ADA.
To strike after provided by the ADA, that the council will not direct city staff to pursue analysis that circumvents or frustrates application of the ADA. That's what the motion is.
And the reason why I make the motion is, again, because I, I don't think that it sends the right message, if that's what we're saying, that there was an intent, attempt to do that.
Well, my concern is that the Tree Board will given a power, and they will not have the capacity to focus on the issues that affect persons with disabilities.
I would say we vote on the motion to amend, pass the ordinance, or pass the resolution, and then actually turn around and give the Tree Board the direction that it needs, based on the good discussion we've had.
Point of personal privilege, as parliamentarian, can you check on the ordering of the motions? Steve, I had a proper motion. I had a proper motion.
Is there a question?
Yeah, it is. You're, as a parliamentarian, can you check?
Well, I'm not the parliamentarian, for one thing, but-
I think you've done parliamentary work.
I have. Uh, so yes, your motion was proper, it was seconded, there was discussion. Nick's motion to amend was proper, it was seconded, there was discussion.
So can we do an amendment while there is a standing prior motion?
Yeah, I think you'd vote.
That's an amendment to the motion.
So you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion depending, depending on-
That's why I asked for a point of personal privilege. Thank you.
It's not a point of personal privilege, but nonetheless. So you vote on the, you voted on the motion to amend, and then you vote on the motion whether it's amended or not.
I got it.
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment. A roll call vote.
I'm sorry.
Is it a roll call, right?
It will be.
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes, okay, Dottie has questions.
With Nick, where are you implying the Tree Board would fit, then?
I think after this resolution is done, Virginia had some ideas in terms of directing. If it's not something we wanna do tonight, then I would understand, we'd put it on the agenda for the next-
You don't have to roll call the amendment. We don't have to roll call the amendment, because you just have to roll call that you added it. So, all in favor, striking that line that I repeated, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no.
No.
Okay, so, Dottie, did you vote?
I said no.
No? Okay, so three yes, two no. Okay. So now, we're gonna vote on the, um, resolution as amended, 1943. And that's a roll call vote.
Okay. Casada?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Carried?
Okay, and now, um, we're gonna give some direct, council wants to give direction to the Tree Board.
I motion that we provide guidance to the Tree Board to design, plan, and do any due diligence with accessibility in mind.
Second.
Okay, motion by Sylvia, second by Virginia. Discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that they reach out to people in the community. I think that, you know, it's good to hear comments at city council meetings, but I think sometimes those private discussions can be pretty useful. Also, I don't know that it needs to be part of this motion, but I would just say that that, I hope would get communicated to them also.
What are you inferring?
As long as we just voted for this, what sorts of things, Virginia, would you suggest directing the Tree Board to?
To make sure that some portion of their plans is ADA, or, I'm sorry, like, I can't even use the word ADA compliant, because that doesn't necessarily mean anything in the context of a wooded trail. They need to make sure that Carla is included in their plans, more or less.
And also other disabilities, blindness, hearing, amputees.
Tell me how hearing would be.
Whoa, I, I, yeah, I think we, we, we would be well-served by having an expert on ADA, in addition to residents with ADA disabilities.
A walking path.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going there at all.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry to-
Paul wants to make a comment. Paul Moore?
The last couple of years, I've been researching this ADA. And according to their reference that was furnished to me by your city engineer, that a community can establish their own ADA committee. In checking with Kent Ralston, Iowa City does not have one. Johnson County does not have one. Another historic first for University Heights, they could start one.
Sure love our historic first.
But it states on there the number of people that serve on this commission- But it states on there, the number of people that serve on this commission, some of them have to be handicapped, and that's what we're talking about. Maybe we need to do that, and the other committees can plan the park, whatever, and then this ADA group can oversee it or make comments and take it from there by putting burden on the Tree Board, and maybe they're not qualified, but your own city engineer furnished me this information. And so that's where I'm at.
Cedar Rapids has that kind of a commission.
Okay, well, I can't reference any because I just checked with Kent Ralston. I've pestered a lot of people about different things, and this is just my point of view. If you're going to try and have some direction, one thing about this park I would like to see is some planning and then some steps, how you plan to take it. What you're going to get done for a goal the first year, what you're going to get done in third, fifth, whatever years. You can't do the whole thing at once, but get started with a master plan. And if you have to spend some money, you had money to buy the place. They gave up the money to start the park because you said, well, you do that with another bond issue. Well, here, you've shot yourself in the foot twice, and that's what I feel about it. Thank you.
Can I just remind council, too, that we have ample streets that do not have sidewalks in this community? We have ample streets with sidewalks that end abruptly. And so I just.
Yeah, how ADA compliant are we?
There's, we've got a lot of work to do.
Carla, your street doesn't have a sidewalk, does it?
Yes, Doug?
We're worried about ADA compliance. I watched Carla try to get in the front door tonight. That door's not even ADA compliant. Who built this building and never thought about putting a door opener on it? Really?
Doesn't have one?
And then the other thing, I, question for Steve, what's our liability for trails as far as if it's natural wood chips, somebody slips, falls down, it's an act of God, but if we pour cement back there, now the city's liable for it? Or how does that work?
Well, the city's liable, potentially liable, whether, whether you, yeah, I mean, the city has an obligation to reasonably maintain things.
Doug, will you tell your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug Swales, 546 Maska Court.
Thank you.
And the other question maybe to think about is, can we have like dual trails? One ADA and one natural terrain, kind of? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's such a varied terrain back there. It's not, there's not a one solution, fits all terrains, even if you're not thinking about ADA accessibility. And so, yeah.
Doug? Okay, so.
There's no way it's going to be a one surfacing, fits all back there.
I think we can't solve the direction tonight of the Tree Board exactly. I think we need to work on this, and I'm willing to work on that. And we have some good people on Tree Board who know things about trails and not just trees, but I want to talk to them about this, too. And then we'll come up with something in the next month or two, okay? And, but we want to, I know the council wants to include people like Carla and maybe some others. Okay? Thank you.
I think it's.
Thank you, Lisa, for making the extraordinary effort to be here with us tonight to provide your, your, your perspective.
Her name is Carla.
That's what I said, Carla.
And it's.
You said Lisa. Although, you're welcome.
Dottie, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to add that the persons that could be instrumental are not just, you know, those in wheelchairs or in, with walkers. There are citizens that, like Mrs. Schmidt mentioned from Oaknell, that walk University Heights all the time, and that would benefit from that. And they are not going to be walking on mulch. So the liability issue is exceedingly troubling.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda here because it's getting after nine, and maybe we can get done in a few minutes. This city treasure report, Lori sent that around, and she sent around the list of the warrants. Is there any objection to pay in the warrants?
Did you get the one I sent you included?
Okay, so they're all complete. And is there any objection to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. And then the police chief report, as you know, as it's been mentioned, the chief couldn't be here tonight for a meeting, and he sent a written report. And so I think that covers that. Do you have anything, Nick?
Yep.
Okay, and Virginia, we'll go to building zoning and sanitation.
All right, we got two proposals for the risk mitigation work that needs to happen on the perimeter of the Swisher Tract. One was for $14,000 roughly from Black Squirrel. Another one was for roughly $20,000 from Advantage Tree Service, who works out of Davenport. Black Squirrel is a known entity to us. We've used them for a number of jobs here in the city. I have not worked with Advantage before. I do know that they have a marginal reputation in this town. I don't know if I can say that, whatever. I've heard some stories. So I would say that we should probably accept the bid from Black Squirrel, as I said.
Okay, motion by Virginia, second by Sylvia. Discussion?
I don't know.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Okay, motion carries. Thank you for doing that. That was a big process. Thank you.
It's, well.
And we're going to take care of some of those trees.
The big part of the work is yet to come in keeping the project moving along.
Yes, I know. And we've got to get rid of some of those hazardous trees.
Well, I'm going to ask them to start on Prospect because that's where the most dangerous stuff is located.
Thank you. I know you've got that.
Terry Gert, the interim rental housing inspector, has resigned from his position. He was frustrated that he was being harassed by council members late at night and early in the morning. So I would ask that in the future, council members, please limit their interactions with staff to appropriate hours. And we need to find a new one. So he'll continue as our building inspector in that role where he's comfortable.
So council, accept the resignation of rental inspector Terry Gert. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Okay, motion carries. Discussion of next steps. I did talk to Terry this morning. He called me. He said he was on vacation, but even though he's resigned from interim rental inspector, he will still work on rental issues before the council, that council wants him to work on until we get a replacement. And he's working on the house on Melrose, and he said, and he's been contacted by Steve Ballard about that. And then I told him about another house I want looked at on Mhaska Court to see about that rental permit. And so it's good to know we do have someone, but we need to go through a process of, and I'm thinking maybe we can post, I haven't, I haven't looked into this, but maybe we can post this with maybe the League of Cities or something. I can look into that.
Louise, we had a conversation about this before Terry's appointment, and yes, we can certainly do that for the League of the Cities. And in addition to a couple of other courts or places for that, I have some information that might be useful. So why don't we team up and work on that?
Okay.
Job description and salary.
And when does the moratorium end? Because we should be on this.
January 15th, something like that.
So we should be on this now.
Yeah, we're trying.
I think, rather than waiting.
I understand, but we're.
Because it's.
We should have been on this from, yeah, from the get-go, yeah. Yeah, but it's okay.
We've been trying.
Is that okay with council for that process?
Yeah, that's fine.
What, did you say?
I just.
To post the job openings?
There will also be fees, so we want to extend that motion for fees as well.
Oh, I thought we were just going to post when the non-fee ones. I mean, we do that with our police chief. We, we didn't post, I mean, I think this last time we did.
Yeah.
Pay it.
Yes, yeah.
But there are places you can post and not pay.
Sure, but, you know, generally you get a good.
Well, do you know then the price?
No, I don't.
Well, then that, you know, then you just, I mean.
How about no more than $200 for the posting? I think that.
Why don't you make a motion for that?
Well, okay, is it packaged with yours? Or what was your motion so we can add it to it?
I don't make motions. I don't vote.
We just had unanimous approval to accept his resignation. I didn't know about first or a second. Is that right?
I thought it was unanimous.
Yeah, I just said, do you want a first and a second? Okay, it was Virginia, and who else wants to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, Nick. So.
It's all motion that Louise continues her work on posting the job.
Do you want to have any money, any fee to it? That's what Sylvia is asking.
I am not familiar with job posting websites that require fees. Would it, like, what it, what do you think?
Well, there are some that don't, I know.
There are some that don't.
Well, we can do both, couldn't we?
I think the League does have a modest fee. I don't know, but it has all the municipal personnel on it, and that's the only advantage. We might be able to capture an inspector.
And we don't know what that fee is.
From another municipal.
Yeah, and we don't know what the fee is. So Sylvia suggested no more than $200.
Sure.
So do you want that in? Okay, so first you motion that we post it, and then add up to $200. Okay, and then Sylvia, will you second that?
Sure, second.
Okay. So any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Thank you. Carries.
Leaf vacuuming November 4th and November 25th.
Yeah, how long does it take safely? Couple weeks? A week? Time parameter?
Two to three days.
A few days usually. It depends on how, you know, how the leaves, you know, how rapidly they fall, you know how, you know how it is. Hopefully, it won't be more than like four or five days. You know, it starts on a Monday, and then they're done Thursday or.
Okay.
Of that week. But everybody's got to have their leaves out on November 4th. I mean, that ideally, I mean, if they didn't come by, of course, you can rake some, you know, can rake some then. Do you have anything else, Virginia?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia, you have.
Yeah, 1942. It's one of several pieces that are coming due for the audit resolution, and that is annual publication. Apparently, having your salaries just on a monthly treasure or report or warrant is not sufficient. We're supposed to aggregate the information and publish it. This is the best that we can, that I could do, and so I'm just recommending that we have this information.
You're saying we can't?
We cannot just say, adopt the warrants and say that was sufficient disclosure for salaries. Once a year, we're supposed to collect the, all of those payments that were made.
But we publish them.
Actually, the press citizen asks for a certain level, and it has to be city employees. So for instance.
So why did the auditor pick that up? He clearly picks that up in his audit, saying, we, we did not have on file, what is it, an audit, an annual publication? That's, that's what his report said. So I'm just going off of the report, solving all of the issues that were spotted.
The press citizen will reach out to us. They will ask for the information. They have a threshold of what they want as far as the, the number.
Oh, I see.
The salary amount.
Got it.
So this is.
Is that approved by a resolution?
No, that's just information that we supply to the press citizen.
And that's, that's where the problem is. We're supposed to do a resolution.
But what you have here is overkill. So for instance, you have, at the very bottom, you have legal fees, you have engineering fees. We do not pay Steve's FICA taxes, federal, state, all of that.
He's not an employee.
He is not an employee.
I understand that, and if you notice, the recitals clearly state that there's additional information being covered.
I understand that, and I understand you're trying to make a point there, but what I'm saying is this is far more than is needed. Usually, it's around $40,000 is what the press citizen is asking for. So if that's what the, $20,000.
All I know is that we needed a resolution. The auditor did not find a resolution. Maybe, and that, I don't think it was good enough for him to get an email saying, we published it and we asked. We're supposed to have a resolution. So I understand what you're saying. I'm saying that I, I put this together, and to the extent that it's responsive to that audit, that's the goal. My goal is to respond to the auditor and say, this council adopted this resolution. Here you go.
I would.
Hey, Steve, is that accurate?
I'd like, I mean, I'd be interested in talking to the auditor. The code says that the council is to, is to publish in its minutes all of its expenditures. Where this issue came up in the law in Iowa is that there was a, this city that said, that said, well, we don't want to publish them every month, we're just going to do it once a year. And the news, a newspaper took them to task and said, no, you have to do it every month. And, and the Attorney General said, no, you can do it just once a year. But the code doesn't require that you do it once a year. The code, if you do it every month, you've met the requirement.
Not according to auditor.
Yeah, and that's why I said I'd be happy to talk with the auditor.
And remember, the auditor is not going by the plain language of the code. They're going through best practices as applicable to that code language interpretation.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but I, but the, the resolution said Iowa code requires this, and I don't think that's accurate.
I didn't know what provision of Iowa code, and I needed to circulate it.
I think we should look this, check this out.
So hold on a minute because the resolution is also introducing information for independent contractors in what I call advisory services, such as engineering, legal, and CPA or accounting. Those are valuable pieces of information residents want to have. And I do not believe that, what's the harm of aggregating the total and releasing that to the public? None. As a matter of fact, you're making it very transparent for residents to know exactly what salaries are involved for everyone. And there's no harm in doing that work because Quickbook, which is the technology that produces this report, does it. So I want to hear what the council's position is on providing what isn't required by the code, but is required as a matter of good public policy for residents who care about these issues.
How could it be any better than publishing this every month? Every expenditure, everything is published every month.
People have to sit down and compare 12 months' worth of invoices. Why would you make it harder for them?
Because it's every month instead of once a year.
That's fine. They do it, you have to do it every month, but this sheet does it on an aggregate basis. And if you go to other cities, they have aggregate basis reporting in addition to the warrants that we do as well.
So if I may.
What exactly is 2018-2019 fiscal year? Are you talking about 2018 fiscal year?
That's the fiscal year that's referenced.
2018 fiscal year?
No, 28-2019. The 2019 fiscal year. It's the one that just closed, Lisa.
What did you want to say?
It's wrong.
So I.
It is because I can see what mine is.
Well, then we can talk to Lori. Can you address what that might, what, I pulled this from.
This would be, this is not a fiscal year. This is calendar year 2018.
I didn't add, well, that's not what it says up there. It's supposed to be a fiscal year. So is Lori here?
Just saying.
She's behind you.
Okay, Lori, I don't know.
Mine's last because I started a quarter in.
That's fine.
Everybody remembers that, right?
That is fine. I, I asked for a report for fiscal year. I don't know. We can ask the city treasurer to ask us. I was provided the information.
So you're saying it's wrong? You're saying yours is wrong?
I'm just saying, this maybe needs to be double-checked before it gets published.
Lori, can you come and speak to that? Because I didn't pull the report, so I'd really like your assistance up here.
Well, you do say something, right? One of the items-
She says she needs to look at it and check it out.
Yeah, this is not information I generated at all. I don't have access to any of the warrant system or data input at all. So that's okay. If we take this up at the next council meeting, that's just, it's fine.
There are actually items that we do need to take up at the next council meeting. I don't know where you saw this. I'm looking directly at the report. Perhaps you're looking at the additional information I need to put with the warrants, which was a reason of the claim, or list of the claims, reason of the claims, summary of receipts, total disbursement by fund, summary of, of, I mean, I could keep reading on.
Yeah, don't worry about it. It's-
There are, we have to update our, the names of our banks and our investment policy. That is something that needs to be done. I'm assuming you're going to do that as finance chair.
Instead of getting that.
And then we also need to have, to make certain that the warrants or the documentation for the warrants are being not only reviewed, but also initialed on everything and dated. And that also falls, falls under your purview. Other items, we have already taken care of.
So, I'm sorry, was this in that list or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
So that's why we need a resolution.
We, no, it says, it doesn't say that we need a resolution. An annual, annual individual gross salaries are published as required, which we do.
Right, and the, and the ways-
We already do it.
We already do it.
Okay, you know what? I spoke with city administrators throughout different cities of different sizes to ask how they handled this, and I borrowed from their best practices and outright procedures. So if you're gonna take issue with that, that's a different question.
I am looking at what the auditor said that we had to do. That is my guiding reference right now.
Fine. That's, that's fine. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying-
Okay.
How I performed this particular task, which by the way-
So you're bringing it back next month?
Is a clerk, is a clerk issue. It's not a finance chair issue. It's just that it was identified as an item for purposes of-
We don't find it.
So anyhow, I will-
We don't find it.
I don't know. Well, Lori will have to provide us with a fiscal year reporting.
So you're gonna bring something back next month?
Along with other items as well.
Okay, so, okay, then we can go on to eGovernment.
Right.
Written report, that's all.
Okay, she filed a written report. Any announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone, for staying to the end.
Yeah.